Good afternoon. Welcome all to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission meeting of June 23, 2014. I'll call a meeting to order as we now have a quorum. Joining me are Commissioners Bender, Brown, Gusselman, and Forni. At this time, please be sure that your electronic devices are silenced. First item of business is to approve the actions for the meeting of June 9, 2014. May I have a motion to that effect? I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are approved. Next item is to approve the agenda. We'll sort out the items on the aqua sheet that you may have found on the table outside into items to be continued to put on the consent agenda or to discuss. So I'll go through them one by one and find out if anybody wants to discuss any of these items in particular. Item number one is 222 Hennepin Avenue Land Survey. Anybody here want to modify or object to the staff recommendation? No one? Okay, we'll put that on consent. Item number two is DC Group Expansion of Vacation. That's 1977 West River Road. Anyone want to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number two? If not, that goes on consent as well. Item number three, Alon Uptown East at 2825 and 2837 Dupont Avenue South will be continued to our next meeting July 14. Item number four is 5336 Lyndale Avenue South, a mixed-use building. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation on item number four? If not, that will go on consent. Item number five is to be continued to the meeting of, is it the 28th? The 28th of July. And we have a letter from the applicant asking for that continuance. Item number six also will be continued to the meeting of July 14. Item number seven, Corner Apartments at 24 University Avenue Northeast. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number seven? If not, that goes on consent. Item number eight is a new residential building at 2622 West Lake Street. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number eight? Seeing none, we will add that to our consent agenda. And item number nine is a mixed-use building at 3118 Lake Street West. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation? Okay, so we will have that as our only discussion item. So, items for the consent agenda are numbers one, two, four, seven, and eight. Items to be continued are items three, five, and six, and item number nine will be discussed. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that is our agenda. I'm sorry? Oh, on that? Okay. Was there a particular item that was? Okay. We move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. At our June 12 Committee of the Whole meeting, we considered a redevelopment plan for the Seward Friendship Co-op as well as several public land sales. Those are at 3800 Clinton Avenue, 3735 22nd Avenue South, 2447 16th Avenue South, 3029 Clinton Avenue, 3532 Chicago Avenue, and 3545 Columbus Avenue. And I will move that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, we find those consistent with the Minneapolis plan. Now, let's see, we now move on to items to be continued. May I have a motion to continue items three and six to the meeting of July 14, and item number five to the meeting of July 28? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, those three items are continued. Now we move to the items on the consent agenda. I'll open the public hearing for those items. Again, that's items one, two, four, seven, and eight. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendations for items one, two, four, seven, and eight? I don't see anyone. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those items are approved per staff recommendation. We now move to our one item for discussion. That's item number nine, mixed-use building at 3118 Lake Street West. Recalling that we have seen this twice in the Committee of the Whole, and so we can have a brief summary, and then perhaps if issues are brought up by the public, we might have more questions.
Thank you, President Tucker.
Thank you.
The property is located at 3118 West Lake Street. It's owned C-3A, which is our community activity center district. It's also within 1,000 feet of Lake Calhoun, and therefore approximately 2/3 of the property is within the Shoreland Overlay District. The required land use applications before the planning commission today include the following: a CUP to increase the maximum height from 2.5 stories, 35 feet, which is what is required in the Shoreland Overlay, to 6 stories, 75 feet; a variance to reduce the west interior side yard setback to the structure, so that would be along this property line; from 15 to 14, and from 15 to 8 for the balconies; variance to reduce the off-street loading requirement for one small loading space, which is required for the residential component of the project, and site plan review for the new 6-story mixed-use building. Staff has evaluated all of the land use applications and found that the proposed project is consistent with all of the required findings for the conditional use permit. We've highlighted in a great deal of detail the minimal shadowing on the adjacent residential property to the east and the Midtown Greenway. We've recognized that they have provided adequate parking in excess of what is required by the zoning ordinance. We've included the travel demand management plan that addresses the traffic issues. There's concern about the traffic impacts expressed by some members of the public, and Public Works has ensured that there would be additional median closures if necessary if they identify issues in the future. The proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Midtown Greenway land use and development plan specifically related to the density. It's 83 dwellings per acre, which is consistent with high density, which is called for in both plans. It's most likely going to be within the southwest transit station area because it will be within a quarter mile of the proposed station. It's a mixed-use building, again, consistent with both the plans, the Minneapolis Plan, and then also the Midtown Greenway land use and development plan. And it also, in design, here's just rendering, is consistent with the architecture density as called for in that plan. Staff has analyzed the additional findings required to increase the maximum height, recognizing its distance from the adjacent residential property to the east, the adjacent property, or the, I'm sorry, the Midtown Greenway to the north. We have found that, again, it's, there's minimal shadowing, the shadow studies have been included. And we also found consistent development pattern when looking at the property immediately to the east. The applicant spent a great deal of time ensuring the compatibility between the two structures, also with a lot of great work with the Neighborhood Association. Additionally, the Calhoun Executive Center is directly to south. That building is taller at 83 feet. And then, as you travel east, I'm sorry, yeah, to the east along West Lake Street, you see building ranges from 2 to 21 stories. Staff has also evaluated the conditional use for the Shoreland findings. Geotechnical reports have been provided. One level on below-grade parking seems to be adequate to both meet the parking demand and to ensure that we don't have water table issues. We find that it would have limited visibility from the protected water, and then there is not direct access as it is about 775 feet away from Lake Calhoun. For the variance to reduce the setbacks, those findings are found on page 10 and 11 of the staff report. Staff finds unique circumstance, including the adjacent use, which is a shopping center, and then the shape of the parcel, which is very unique. It's very narrow and very deep. The applicant's intent of seeking this variance is to allow for a greater separation to the residential use to the east, and they've also demonstrated the limited shadowing, as I previously mentioned. The applicant's also decided to pursue the variance to eliminate the off-street loading requirement. Instead, they have devised a plan to ensure scheduling of move-ins, move-outs, furniture moving, et cetera, for the residential component by utilizing some of the reserved spaces for the restaurant. So that will occur during off-hours of the restaurant. The restaurant itself did not require any additional off-street loading, but West Lake Street is not an appropriate location for loading anyway, so that can be accommodated on-site. Staff finds that the applicant was able to adequately address those findings, and staff also was able to make those findings. For alternative compliance, in particular, building placement, the building is greater than eight feet back, but there is an outdoor patio space for the restaurant and landscaping improvements between the public sidewalk and the building, and therefore is recommending alternative compliance. Similar to entrances facing West Lake Street, recognizing that the restaurant has two entrances onto the patio, which gives it a front face, and there's also a pedestrian walkway that connects the public sidewalk to the residential uses along the west property line. Blank walls. Staff is asking the applicant to ensure that we do not have any blank walls in excess of 25 feet. That is occurring on the first floor on both the east and west elevations. The applicant has agreed with that condition. 20% windows, recognizing that the window requirement facing the parking lot, it's 12%, 20% is what's required. The upper floors are at least 37%. And windows would only look into the parking garage. So staff is recommending alternative compliance. And then finally, screening of the on-site parking area adjacent to the west property line, which would be nearest to the Loop Calhoun. Staff is recommending a three-foot hedge. The applicant is in agreement and is willing to provide that. So with that, staff is recommending approval of all of the requested applications with stated conditions at the end of the report, and I am happy to take any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions at this point? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
At this point, I will open the public hearing. I'd like to hear first from the applicant if there's anything to be said, any changes since we last saw this.
Good evening, Chair Tucker and Commissioners and staff. My name is Aaron Roseth with ESG Architects. I'm here with Trammell Crowe this evening, and they're here for questions as well as our staff. One of the items that came up at the last Committee of the Whole meeting was the question of the ramp and how that would interface in a section quality. We do have some preliminary graphics of the way that that's unfolding, but as we said from, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, we really need to work hand-in-hand with staff and streets and sidewalks to make sure that we're meeting their needs as well. So I can show those to you this evening. Otherwise, I know that we're working hard with the city staff.
So do you have a proposed solution that you can show?
Sure will.
Okay.
Can I have access to the computer? Well, Shannon's doing that. As we've mentioned in the past, we've had a great working relationship with Sydney. We've worked with them for almost eight months now on numerous meetings leading up to tonight of lots of different feedback and back and forth, and we're very proud of the project we're presenting tonight to you and believe that it was a good, because of that dialogue, it's really developed into what we consider an amazing project going forward. And at the end of the full board meeting, we did end up receiving unanimous support So in front of your screen right now is the, was a previous proposal, and we had talked with you about that section quality and kind of a hard edge to that. Because of the suggestion from PDR, which we think will actually start to improve this, that edge now becomes part of the retaining wall for the ADA-accessed ramp that starts essentially at the lobby residences and then would continue up at an appropriate slope till you meet that high point of this site, which will also be a series of pedestrian plazas and open green space at the top. One of the suggestions that was also asked of us was to look at potentially even greening the back of that, and that's something that we're looking at as well. So other than that, Trammell Crowe and our staff is here for questions.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. I don't see any. So you're going to continue working with staff on that ramp to make it ADA-accessible and safe and inviting, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I invite anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter to come forward. Please give your name and address for the record. At a public hearing, please speak to the applications before us, which you will see on the agenda, and we'll listen carefully to what you have to say. Yeah, you can put something down there.
All right. So my name is Jonathan Erickson. I live at 3141 Dean Court, which are the condo buildings immediately north of the projected, or proposed project. I'll start off by saying I'm a poor public speaker, so I apologize in advance. All right, so, a little hesitant about this, but, so I will be arguing against granting the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height of the building. I will get better than this at least.
That's fine, you're doing well.
All right, so to give you some background on why I'm arguing this, I think it's important. So I purchased my condo less than 12 months ago. I purchased it almost entirely for the view from the building, from my apartment. Just like anybody that buys a piece of property that has lake views, you pay a premium for it. I was no different. You know, when I went in and looked at this property the first time, went on the patio, said, "What a great view." Second thing I said was, "Look at that patch of dirt right there, just waiting to be developed." And, you know, at the time, I felt fortunate because I had a real estate attorney representing me on this transaction as opposed to a more traditional real estate agent. You know, expressed my concern. He went, did a little research, and then came back, explained how the property was owned, what the risks were. I moved forward with the purchase, understanding the risks, you know. I knew it could be rezoned. I knew that there could be variances. I fully expected that type of thing. You know, when I thought there was going to be a variance, I was expecting, you know, the height to be increased, 5%, 10%, 20%, 30%, 50%, not necessarily over 100%. That, I found a little bit of a surprise. You know, the zoning code is basically a social contract between the city and its residents. I relied on it, a lot of other people in the neighborhood relied on it, and it's got to be held up as it's written. So my argument today is basically that this commission, and for that matter, the city council, doesn't have the legal authority to grant a conditional use permit because it doesn't meet the facts required by the ordinance. And I know that when you guys make these decisions, you rely on, you know, a number of factors, including firsthand experience where you have it, if you know the property, whatever else. But I know you also rely on comments from me, the people that are proposing the project, neighborhood associations, and of course, staff reports. So what I want to do is basically highlight some issues within the three kind of data sources that I mentioned there that are not me. Data from the developer and architects, information in the staff report, and from Sydney. So I'll start with developers, architects. In general, I've been impressed with, you know, Trammell Crowe, ESG, beating that. I think they, you know, they put together a beautiful building. I think they handled themselves very well. They're very, you know, I think very highly of them. I know they have a track record of putting together beautiful buildings, and if this building wasn't directly harming me, I would probably be for it. You know, I think one of the guys from Trammell Crowe is a guy from Southwest High School. It's always great to see people come back to Minnesota, you know, and, so I hate being the one that stands up and tries to get in the way of any project. But at the same time, if it's hurting me, what, you know, what else would anybody do? You know, I'll probably, as I'm sitting up here, probably cut it short. I was going to go into traffic because that is an important thing, I think, rather than dwell on that though, because I don't think it will be persuasive to you guys, but we all know that that area is congested, dangerous. We know there was a death there recently. We know that, you know, putting a building that's going to have 200 people, basically have their driveway dumped them out onto that street, is going to add to the problem. And this property is particularly bad positioned because, you know, if you think of the gray star one down the street, people can go out either way. This building, it doesn't matter if you want to walk across the street, go left, go right, anywhere, you are being pushed right out on that intersection, and every time you slow up traffic. You know, some of the things that are being proposed as remedies, you know, bike parking spots, 80 of them, you can put 800 of them, it's not going to impact traffic. Well-lit streets promote walking, or sidewalks promote walking, you know, they're just little things. The only thing that's actually material is restricting the turns, and that doesn't solve the problem, it just kicks it 50 yards down the road. It's going to have people going out, doing U-turns, coming back. But, again, that's not my main argument. So the one other place that I think there is some flaws in some of the data received from the architects and developers, and so I don't know who to point the finger at, and I don't even know that it's wrong, but I do want to highlight some things that I think need a closer look. Have you guys objected to the review with this? They've got five grade measurements, two for this building, three for that. It's not that complicated. You know, I don't doubt actually the technical accuracy of these numbers, but they're gaming the numbers. Everybody knows, you know, the saying about statistics. This view also ignores where the peak height is in the property. You know, at the Loop condos, just one here, it's a mechanical thing that's midway north-south, and it's truly, you know, it's there to serve a function. But the proposed building, they can't get it any far forward, anymore forward. It's the absolute front of the building, at least at the high point, and it's not a mechanical thing. It's a, you know, it's a featured thing on the property. It's, you know, probably the marquee feature of it. And so I think it's, you know, the measurements are misleading, or the comparisons at least, and it's not, it's not hitting on the important points. You know, in one of the Sydney meetings, I brought up something, and that is, just a, so I don't know if you can read it there, but they say the height of the Loop condos at the top here is the same, 75.8. So here is the 2005 resolution from Sydney that approved the Loop condos, and, what that shows you? Oops, I'm sorry, forgive me. Apologize, too many pieces of paper here. There it is. So when they, when they approved the Loop condos, the condition is, it basically says the height of the building, including parapet, will be 56 feet, and the peak height of the bridge will be 60 feet. The numbers that we're looking at today show the, the bridge at 75. We're not talking it's different by 4 inches, 6 inches, 10 inches, 1 foot, 5 feet, 10 feet, it's 15 feet different.
Well, you're talking about a different project than is in front of us today, right? Where this height went up by?
So this is a slide that I did not create. It's a slide.
I understand, but you're talking about a previous project.
Yeah, well, so, so I'm basically saying their argument of comparing it to the one next door is misleading and probably inaccurate. So if this is being used, which it has been repeatedly, just highlighting that, that information.
Okay, thank you.
And then in case, you know, you wanted to say, "Well, that was Sydney resolution, that wasn't what we reviewed," here's the 2005 from this commission. This is just the header page so that you can see that I'm referencing the correct document. But here, again, so here again, the punchline is that it basically the same number, it was approved by the commission at a comparable height. It actually went up between the two, but 60 feet, 56 feet up front. So what I'm concerned about is that if the planning commission approved this building 56 feet or 60 feet, and it ends up being 75, that either means there's got to be one of two things. It either means the enforcement doesn't work at all, and what's currently a 75-foot building could end up being 90 feet, or it means that the numbers, you know, we're looking at here are inaccurate.
I think we get your point there.
All right. So, but again, you know, I, I think those guys have done a fantastic job in terms of the building and everything else, so I feel bad, you know, being a roadblock of building and everything else, so I feel bad, you know, being a roadblock of sorts. Sydney, so they have endorsed the building, or at least not opposed it, you know, and there's been much, basically, said about how closely they've worked with them. Frankly, everybody I've talked to thinks it's been too close. Frequently, you know, it's almost hard to tell the difference. And I want to give you a few examples. So as we were just looking at the building...
I don't think we, it's our issue if Sydney works closely with the developer or not, but...
I'm not saying it is, but if they're allowed to present that, how closely they've worked with Sydney?
Well, if Sydney wants to complain that their relationship is being misrepresented, they can come forward and do so, but...
I'm complaining that they're misrepresenting their relationship.
Okay, we still look at this for ourselves, but...
All right. So I will jump ahead. But I do think that, just one key thing. So this is an example of what I was going to, you know, go in more depth on. I don't even know that the public is fully aware of what it is, because every time Sydney talks about it, you can see here, front page story, 56 feet, plus or minus four feet. That's what a lot of people think is going up. Sydney publishes guidelines that they put out for developers. They did not even attempt in any way to follow, or even encourage them to go towards those guidelines. You know, from the very beginning, they never even suggested a building that actually fit within the existing code. So. I'll just move ahead to the staff report. Now, at least...
How many more points do you have to get through?
How much time do I have?
You're about five minutes over what usually we give to testimony, but we want to hear what you have to say. But if you could speed it up, we would appreciate it.
I'm just glad that you guys are receptive. All right, so, and I will try to pick it up. Here is the staff report, page two here. Public comments. Staff has received public comments from Cedar Isles Dean Neighborhood Association and the Midtown Greenway Coalition, period. I submitted letters, I got confirmation that they would be included in the packet, they weren't, it's not referenced here. The park board...
Got them.
After I checked on it the following day, they made a correction, but it wasn't originally. But it's not mentioned here. The park board submitted a letter, it's in the packet. You know, so the park board came out against it, it's not identified here, Cedar Isles and Midtown Greenway are for it, it's up here, it just seems, it doesn't seem balanced in, you know, presenting both sides of the argument. And I guess, you know, here's the letter from the park board, if you want to see it.
We have it, we have it in our packet, thank you.
All right. So here's the meat then. For a conditional use permit, as you guys are all aware, you have to meet the, you know, what is it, four, six conditions. Among them, that it will not be interest of the use and enjoyment of property. And they, the staff has found that it is not. I'm here testifying that it is. Anybody in their right mind that knows that a piece of property that has Lakeview and is now going to be obstructed, the real estate value would be harmed.
Excuse me, I think we have a question from a commissioner here.
Mr. Erickson, in your letter, you included some photographs, and they were reproduced for some black and white, so I'm wondering if you have them today, because I'm trying to ascertain exactly what your current view is versus what part of it will be obstructed going forward.
I do. And so I will say that, you know, I have a number of them. That one's from the 10th floor. And I can, it's hard to see, I've basically drawn a red line estimating where the building would be. I can bring it up there.
Oh, we can see your line.
Here's another view, this one is from the 8th floor.
Mr. Erickson, are you suggesting that everything within the boundary of that red line is the building, or is it just that that's the height and the building's somewhere in there?
That is what will be, the view that will be obstructed.
Thank you.
One more. And then, so I anticipate that you will question the accuracy of my red line. And so, a couple of things that I did want to show you. So this is a, you know, from the project owners, that kind of shows a bird-eye view looking south to Lake Calhoun. So that's, that's one view. Now, you can see our building over here, so it's a bird-eye view, not necessarily, you know, what it would be from our building. So if I'm on the 10th floor, you know, there's people down to the 4th floor that are going to be completely blacked out. That was a bird's eye view. This is actually a image from one of the original proposals, so you'll notice the building is wider back here, but it is the same height. You'll notice that it's a little bit, it's got more of a front edge thing there. But this is, if you can see it, but it's the six-story option from Calhoun Isles top floor. So this is the view from the, you know, million-dollar-plus apartment on the 12th floor. Each floor down, it gets worse and worse. And you'll notice here that their drawing basically has the front edge of this, about at the same height as the, I forget the name of that office building, but that's basically what I used as a guidepost to draw my red line. And, you know, you could debate whether the red line should be up a centimeter or down, but there's no, there's no way that you can argue that people's views are being obstructed in a significant, material way. And. I think this is closing in on the end. So this is a, I don't know if it's minutes, or it's, I guess it's findings, from an appeal for the lander property, so it's actually, you know, the same property that these guys are working on down the street. And I'm using it just because there was an appeal filed against this, and because the developer was, had their conditional use permit rejected, and they filed an appeal, and the appeal was further rejected. And so this just kind of tells you, lets you see that, what I'm talking about. And then. Here is the actual text of kind of the findings of the appeal. "The increase in height of the building would be interest to use enjoyment of property reduces access to air and light for adjacent properties, will cast morning shadows, evening shadows. The height of the building would interfere with or obstruct views in significantly open spaces, it would also interfere with views of the Lake Calhoun." There's a tail end of that. "And the fact pattern of this case, and the fact pattern of what's impacting Calhoun Isles condominium today with the 3118 building, is indistinguishable." This is such a close precedent, it's hard to imagine how somebody could say that this needed to be rejected, and it's okay to take away our view. And. Since I seem to have gone too long, I'll just send it there.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see if there are any other questions. Commissioner Lipke here.
I just was curious if you can put one of the photographs up showing the red lines, again, just for us to kind of have...
Just leave it up there.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Is there someone else going to want to testify on this? Okay.
I won't add much, but two of those views are from my place, so perhaps that'll help clarify...
Could we have your name and address, please?
Yes, Becky Gorman, I'm at 3141 Dean Court. I'm on the 8th floor. And. These are photographs I took yesterday. So this one is out my main view. And it obscures almost the entirety of the Lakeview that I purchased my condo three years ago. So this is taking out the, almost the entirety of my view. And I went through all parts of my condo and took photographs from every angle, and it doesn't matter what angle I take it, because it's a long kind of arrangement in my condo, it doesn't matter what window or what room I go to, it still obscures all of my view from all of my windows throughout my condo. And so this was another one that I took, can you see that one okay? That he was able to put the lines on, that's just another view I took yesterday, from my main, my main room of my living and dining area. So. I have, I've taken other views of, but I don't think we brought all those with us, but I think this pretty well captures it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want these left up? Okay. I don't know how to put them both up there, if that is important, but we'll leave them both here in case. Thank you.
Yeah, we should have those go to the clerk sitting at the end of the bench for the record.
No.
Yeah, that would be a good time.
Do you want this?
And Mr. Erickson, if you have similar material you want to submit to the record, you should do that as well, and leave it with Ms. Ques at the end there.
So you didn't need these to stay here for now?
No. Is anyone else wishing to speak? No. If you wanted it in the record, you should turn it in to the clerk, yeah, maybe your highlighted documents. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? I don't see anyone. In that case, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have, let's see, four, four applications, a CUP for the height of the building, which seems to be in dispute, and two variances in the site plan review. Kind of a motion to get the discussion underway, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will start things off by moving staff recommendation to approve items A, B, and C, the conditional use permit and the two variances.
Okay, that's moved, do we have a second? Moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation for A, B, and C. Did you want to speak more about that, or...
I can just elaborate on that a little bit, and just respond to some of the comments we heard in the testimony. I did look, really, when you look at the city's long-range plans for this area, it is a location, certainly it's within walking distance of a future transit station, it is a location where we envision residential density in the future, and I realize it could be very jarring to see a large building built on a site that right now is very underdeveloped. But I think it's pretty straightforward to make the findings we need to for that conditional use permit. And really, looking at the relationship of the height of the proposed building to that of the existing building, we really don't have the policy discretion to hold it to that level, or relate it too much to the existing building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Commissioner Forni?
Or just concerned, we know that this is consistent with what the city is looking for. It is in the Shoreland Overlay District, and we have been on record of opposing any development that fringes the park land, exceeding the height limit. So I am definitely understand where you're coming from. I think it's a higher concern I have, and that is that there is just such incredible density that has, occurring in here, and we still have not addressed the traffic issues. So that is why I'm personally voting against it. I agree with Chair Tucker that, or I'm not sure who was it, but anyway, Matt, I believe, anyway, that instead of maybe the Shoreland Overlay dictating, we should be looking and talking more directly to performance space zoning. I need to comment, I'm sorry, I abstained at the wrong point regarding 2622 West Lake Street. That, to me, I think has been a very wonderful standard as far as dealing with performance space zoning. I compliment the developer on that. There still, though, is the issue of how to deal with the traffic, and as many of you may know, we did do a charrette to try and address a lot of these issues. And so I hope that going forward, we can look more directly at that standard of zoning. So I, like I say, I will be voting against this particular project.
Commissioner Gagnon?
Thank you. I'm going to back up what Meg just said, because I think really the traffic is the issue that we're not talking about. It's a really dangerous spot over there, adding a lot of traffic over there is, I just can't see how it's going to be managed. And I do have concerns about blocking the Shoreland View, and I understand, I mean, you don't own necessarily the view outside your apartment, but I do understand that you go in and pay for something like that with the expectation. However, that spot for the way that the streets are routed and so forth, and we do have a lot of walkable area over there, so there is a lot of folks walking and biking, and just to add a tremendous amount more traffic without some consideration is worrisome to me.
Commissioner Lipke here.
I have a question for staff. Shannon, was there a TDMP done on this?
Yes, there was a TDMP, it was included in the packet.
And what were the conclusions?
So there's about 57 pages of documentation that relates to proposed traffic counts that are generated by both the 157 dwelling units and the 5,000-square-foot commercial restaurant. Based on that analysis, the Public Works believes that there will not be adverse impacts. That's addressed in statement, or in finding number four under the conditional use permit. Additionally, the applicant has provided excess parking from what is required by the zoning ordinance, and I failed to mention, I apologize during my presentation, but one additional means of traffic safety, which is a concern in the area and for this property, the applicant is proposing to provide a landscape boulevard, which does not currently exist, between the pedestrian walkway and West Lake Street. And they are working with the adjacent property owner, the Loop Calhoun, and they're trying to carry it all the way down to the 2622 West Lake Street to encourage a buffer zone that will separate the pedestrians from West Lake Street, as we know, which is a busy street. But it was determined that there will not be adverse traffic impacts. It has been analyzed by both our staff and the engineering staff from Public Works.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, actually, I did have another one regarding, in relation to the photograph that was up on the screen earlier, which is one reason I kind of wanted it left up there. The one issue I had, or question I had, was in regard to the height of the adjacent building, and whether the majority of the proposed building kind of complies with that height, it kind of mimics it in a way. It seemed to me as though the red line was drawn to a height for the building beyond there, which completely blocked the lake, whereas if it was actually drawn at the height of the adjacent building, it almost left all the lake views open. So I just was wondering if there's any way we can get that back up, just to look at it for a second, and perhaps staff could tell me if indeed it's tied to the right height of the right building.
Okay, well, we're working on that right now.
Okay, I think this was the first photograph.
Yeah, that's the photograph. So I was under the impression that it was a similar height to that kind of beigeish building in the lower-left corner, not the black building in the background. Is that correct?
You're correct. The building here is the Lake Calhoun Executive Center, that's 83 feet in height.
Okay.
The proposed building, for the majority of the proposed before you today at 3118 West Lake Street, is about 63 feet. The reason why the conditional use permit is to 75 feet is when you're in the Shoreland Overlay, we have to measure to the uppermost projection, so it's 75 and change. But the building itself was designed to be consistent and similar to the Loop Calhoun, which is here. And the full building width actually is about, would end about here. So there would be, there's between 50 and 100 feet between the two buildings.
Oh, yes, it seemed like foreground versus background would aid in that perspective there. So I'm kind of just in, when we were kind of holding our papers up to the screen here to see where that line kind of fell, now from there I could see where it might block quite a bit of the Lakeview, but from the previous photo, it appeared to have almost all the Lakeview exposed. So then the question comes down to our commission as to whether or not, what authority a person has to build on this land, and whether or not views can be preserved or not. And I don't know enough about the case that was heard before ZMP to weigh in on what their findings were, and exactly why they appealed it one way or the other, so I can only go off of what this commission has done, and this commission approved that building. So I kind of think, on one hand, a precedent has been set by this commission, whether or not it can be appealed as ZMP, I don't know. But I'm hoping my other commissioners will weigh in on what their opinions are in regard to that.
I think you're correct, and Commissioner Brown mentioned the context here, that we have been approving larger buildings in this place. Also need to note that views are not protected, I'll... Also need to note that views are not protected, although certainly when you buy a property, you hope the view that you find there will be protected forever. We do certainly protect public buildings and, and views of particular importance, but... Commissioner Bender, do you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address the Shoreland Overlay District, and I think maybe staff could clarify my interpretation. I think this causes a lot of confusion. The Shoreland Overlay District, in my understanding, is there to protect our waterways, the river and our lakes, which is really important. And my understanding is that the purpose, so a conditional use permit, different than a variance, it means you have to meet the conditions, as I, and I think everyone understands. And the purpose there is really protect, you know, erosion control and to make sure that the quality of our lakes and the river are in keeping with standards. And so, I mean, I know we were talking just recently with staff about changing how we're doing Mississippi River. Some of the Shoreland Overlay District stuff statewide really addresses a much more rural landscape, and so we're actually advocating for changes that are more in keeping with our urban environment for the river, riverside overlay district. So again, so the, a CUP there is just to make sure that people are meeting the criteria that they need to, as dictated by the law, to ensure the water quality and erosion controls in place, and it seems to me that this project is, is meeting those. And I know they specifically designed the building around the Shoreland Overlay District, is my understanding. That's why the lower piece of the building is closer to the lake.
Other commissioners wishing to speak on the motion to approve A, B, and C? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Lipke here. Gisselman? Gagnon? Forni?
No.
Brown? Bender? That's four to two.
Okay, that motion passes. Mr. Wittenberg, you wish?
President Tucker, just one point of further clarification, alluding to something Ms. Sather pointed out, that in the Shoreland Overlay District, we have to currently measure to the highest projection of the building, including all mechanical equipment or other projections, and that was actually not the case back in, I think it was 2005, when the project referenced previously was approved at the shore, the height standards actually did change to become essentially more restrictive by now requiring that, that those kinds of projections at the top of a building be included in the maximum height in the Shoreland Overlay District.
Okay, thank you. We have one more application, the site plan review. Staff recommends approval and four conditions.
Yes, and I'll move approval of item D, the site plan review, with the four stated conditions.
Okay, I wonder if we could add a fifth condition, that applicant continue working with staff on that ramp to make the ADA accessible, safe, and inviting. I think that's what we had said in Cow, anyway, and they seem to be proceeding along that path, anyway. Okay, did we get a second on that? Okay, second to approve the site plan review, and now five conditions. Any discussion? If not, please call a roll.
Bender?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Forni?
Hi.
Gagnon?
Hi.
Gisselman?
Hi.
Lipke here. That's six zero.
Thank you very much. That, that is also approved, and with that, we conclude our business. Mr. Wittenberg, any announcements? We have a Cow meeting this Thursday.
That's correct.
Shorter than our previous one?
Shorter than the previous one, but still a lot going on.
A lot of meat. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for, for joining us here this afternoon. We are adjourned until the next meeting, which is July 14th, 2014. Let's see.